Good evening. The board initiated the meeting at 6:40 PM. Entered executive session at 6:42 PM for discussion of personnel matters. And exited executive session at 7:09 PM. So we apologize for returning to the public meeting relatedly. We will now return at 7:13 PM. So in executive session, no motions were made, no actions were taken, discussed. And how did we show any public participants or hands areas?
No.
I know Catherine will have something to say in the Friends section of the agenda. Okay. So from a board administration perspective, we'll turn first to acceptance of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2023 special meeting, which was focused on the new website launch.
Make a motion. All in favor?
Make a motion of apologies to.
Make a motion, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, very disturbed.
Right, but your motion is to accept the.
I make a motion to accept the eight minutes of the November 2nd, 2023 special meeting. Perfect. Second by ten last.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Redundant. Next, we'll move to the acceptance of the minutes of the November 7, 2023 meeting.
I move to accept the minutes of the November 27, 2023 meeting. I think.
All second to the monkey. Sorry. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Through the agenda has a date incorrect on Part B there. It says November 7th and says.
Thank you. Okay. And finally, the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 meeting. John, you want to lead?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 meeting. Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
One more.
And next, the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 regular meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. So that's a lot of catching up on minutes. Carolyn will ask that you work with with staff to get those adults to be left, right? If you would be so kind. Yeah. Next, we'll move forward with the proposed slate of officers. Proposal is Pam Motwitz for president, Brian Cook for vice president, George Benet as finance officer, Jennifer Faking as secretary. Just a reminder. I think it's good since this will dominate the coming year. Just a quick review. So the president presides at the board meeting is responsible for the conduct and effectiveness of the meetings. And really their term are success as a board or across their term. The president is responsible for calling special meetings, for appointing committee chairs and members serving as the primary conduit to legal executing documents is authorized by the board, the signatory effective with primarily liaison with the director with weekly meetings, drafting meeting agendas and administrative folks at office. The vice president. And I will just say that have they come off of that? It is an extremely non-consummate role. So thank you for your consideration of that role. The vice president is meant to stand ready to assume the duties of the president in their absence and could participate in library director, performance conversation, overseeing vendor contracts and renewals, primarily liaison friends of the Chappaq Ball Library and meets adjusted, all but enough final formalized in our bylaws, CCSD liaison. These summaries are sort of a combination of our bylaws handbook and our agreement as a board. One thing I'll say about the vice president role. The president has to take a leadership role with respect to so much addressing the library. And because we discourage single action, that's not reflective of the whole. The general historical procedure and recommendation has been to include another officer in almost any act, whether that includes working clinical, et cetera. So I can tell you, you know, over the last year, Kim and I have worked extremely closely, whether it's been reach outs to legal, basically any complex issue. He's been my co-chair because he's in that vice presidential hall. So I'm just trying to, you know, clarify that. What you have heard as as a perspective candidate. Our finance officer oversees the budget process and presentations, investment strategies and accounting procedures. Here's the finance committee. I think, George, we talked about waiting on that, which I thought was actually a great recommendation on your part to get a full year's budget under your belt. So we may treat that differently. You would be the liaison with the the primary liaison with the auditor and introduce financial motions. The secretary is meant to keep a record of all meetings of the board, maintain the chat board email account, the online calendar, the board calendar, track trustee training was something we added in 2023. Draft PR responses, if vindicated. Historically, that's worked well with the communications committee. And we need the onboarding of new trustees with aggregation of inter. So those are the main goals. So my official motion is that we approve the new slate of officers as proposed. Do I have a second?
Okay.
And discussion? Okay. All in favor? Now to talk about committees, and if you wanted to.
Yes, I wanted to talk about. Well, specifically, I just wanted to talk about the personnel committee. So I wanted, there's been a suggestion by the personnel committee that John and I remain in our positions. It is felt, it was felt by the committee that the turnover is difficult, that when we, you know, learn things and we gain momentum, that the board turns over. And that maybe we, if we could kind of sort of have a little bit more time under our belt with what we already know. And so just specifically with the personnel committee. Unless somebody felt that different with.
So the question I would give you, yes, when I spoke about this, is generally the president is discouraged from certain.
Okay, so I can stay off of it. So then my recommendation is that John, that keep John on it. Yeah, that no problem, keep, keep, keep John on.
And you're welcome.
To attend any of these.
No, to make an exception.
Okay, but I don't, I don't have to. If John, I, I think that.
We're good.
We're good, right? I think having one of us is better than none of us.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So should we tick through these?
Sure.
So the finance committee were recommending no change. I think the intention would be to move George into into that role as as time proceeds. But for now, we'll keep things as is with Brian Cook chairing and George Benet as member. Agreed. I'll just tick through them all and then we can vote. Building and grounds committee, no change, myself as chair, and you're willing to.
Absolutely.
We've been working. You can, you can reevaluate as you move into the president role and.
Okay.
Your time for that, right?
Okay.
So we've talked about stress across the board. And time commitments. Okay, so personnel, we've talked about policy bylaws committee. What you're recommending?
I think if John and George are good, that works. You, I think you may want to add a, so for then Brian, I'll go to person. Brian or yourself will go to personnel.
Okay. Brian, do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference, so whichever you prefer.
Well, people think about, just take a look at this and think about your time because we do know that, well, all of this. Whenever, whenever you like. So policy bylaws, we, we do bring you up because we remove you as the chair. Yeah. Move to John as chair, that you're chair and you're in committee, you're okay.
With both policy bylaws as well as.
Yes.
And for personnel. Yeah. Well, you know, you did most of the heavy lifting with this one recently, so I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, policy bylaws now. Walk in the.
Walk in the park. Right.
Carolyn sewed it up. Yeah.
She answers, yes, I'm gendered around five, but whatever you think.
And, and George, is that, does that, do you serve in that committee? I think that he's brand book. Good talent in that regard. Communications, we may want to rethink if John's staying as head of personnel because we probably didn't have him chair three, that really ought to work. Brian.
So, so, but here's the, how about keeping George? How do you feel about staying on it in terms of continuity?
I can stay with that.
Okay. You're okay with the finance department as well? Okay.
So George is staying on.
Should we keep that out of this? George is chair and Brian as member? Brian, does that work?
Yeah, George can be my volunteer boss.
And then search, we really can't discharge until we finalize the radio in that bowl. And she starts and then I, my proposal would be that in the subsequent meeting, I could start that committee. Which will probably you just start in yourself.
Okay, great. And George.
And, and the broader committee, which you've already cited as having been where the bully collaborative and. Okay. Any further discussion on all that? All in favor? Aye. Okay, Carolyn, I will send a follow up reflecting this. So you've been working how, well, how appropriate to amend the website.
Is any, is anyone's term ending with June?
Mine, of course. June 30. So this goes into effect as of today.
As of today. Okay, as of, so the chief chair as of today.
Okay. So welcome around to this. Next, major development, the charter amendment petition as approved by this board on August 14, 2023. And based upon that it had been sent August 24, 2023, was approved by the Regents of the University of the State of New York. We've included draft bylaw changes. So I'll make a motion, we'll get a second half discussion. I move that the board approve the revised bylaws reflecting the change to a three-year term as initially posted in March 2023, discussed in marketing portion in August, September, 2023, regular board meetings as drafted. Do we have a second? Sorry. So I, thank you. Any discussion? We have talked about this. Starting with John's.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Carolyn, I will follow up because we're going to have to modify the website as well. Yeah, we've got that wonderful new provision about deeper trustees, so clarify that. And we'll have to reach out to Lisa. Blank, not her name, forgive me. For everything. The. The. Honestly, for the.
Yeah. E, it's area. I, I know who you're talking.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we, we should have a conversation in that regard. Elsner.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Okay, I'll close out this session and then you take over the meeting. Just a recommendation that we move forward. Things have been pretty busy with the search committee, et cetera. Of various personnel issues with the weekly readings between president and our library director on the weekly policy thing on track. I think the search committee has sort of served in that capacity to date, right, in 2024. And then a note that we need to begin planning for 2024 trustee recruitment. Well, I think we should put that up on the memory on the website.
Yes, exactly.
And that process begins with.
Is there some central language that you want to have about recruiting for openings?
Yeah, we developed this wire.
We did. You're. What kind of ready location?
I can.
All right, so it's there already. A pressure that's beautiful for to put around.
We're talking about a banner announcer of some kind, not just leaving the way it is now where it describes the trusty position, we want to make some kind of announcement.
Exactly. Correct, on, on the website.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have language that was used last year?
Yeah, we have the flyer that we used last year to update it for this year. And I think we have to leave it, we'll work with, or maybe working with web team about where it should look, where it should be. The, the election will be in May, so maybe it needs to be in the forefront. And I think you just mentioned that.
And this, it would go to the tower, right?
In March and April as well. Right, that we speak to with Vinsley.
Okay.
This would be Tao would be responsible for making the adjustment, what you said, right?
All right, so moving on to finance.
There we go.
Oh, we have to thank Dan.
Yes.
So much.
You're here.
For all of your work. Unbelievable. Working with you and CC, being CC'd, it's, it's really, you are a tremendous, just you are a tremendous person in our community. And thank you for stepping up as your events. We have a grateful interview to all those times. Moving on to finance. We have the November, December, 2023 treasurer's report prepared by Naraki Smith, Naraki Valley Treasurer, presented by Brian Cock for the finance. Brian, we're now. Take your way.
Yes. I have a November report, I don't have a summer one.
Yeah, you don't have to, we don't have that either. They only gave us the November, up to November.
So Naraki Smith has prepared the November 2023 treasurer's report based upon the library recording of information into the library's QuickBooks accounting program. Year-to-date budget to actual operating activity, November 2023. Revenue collected, 50% of school district tax levy plan and revenue has been collected and approximately $16,933 in excess planned revenue collected from other sources. Expenses, 35.15% of total annual budget expenses have been recorded to date. Balance sheet summary as of November 30th, 2023. Total assets, $2,169,155. Page four of the financial statements has detailed assets liability and fund balance summary. Included in the report, which is available in the packet, are the checks prepared by the library on December 1st through December 31st. We have not examined supporting documentation yet. And Rocky Smith has prepared and corrected the library's bank statements and the related bank reconciliations for November 2023. The bank account for checking has been reconciled to the library's books. We know that two check numbers were recorded incorrectly in QuickBooks. Upon the finding, Naraki Smith corrected discrepancies. There are 13 checks that are over six months outstanding, totaling $11,769. I checked last month, it was 12 checks, totaling $11,636. It looks like one additional check is added to the queue. I know Shentel is working on getting those resolved. Rocky Smith recommends that we contact the vendors, which I believe we are, are doing in our issue payment year.
Okay.
That's the summary.
Okay, can we move on to your big motion?
A second.
Any discussion? I just want to congratulate the, the finance committee. You really, I, I think managed Naraki Smith into a very important role for us. They've, they've really stepped up as we needed them to take on additional tasks. And you all have managed that superbly, so.
They've been great and here's the good, some of the monthly testing that they've done is something that hasn't been done in a while here. It's helpful for us from a risk standpoint.
We have friends, friends of the Chappaq. Yeah, just, just a related discussion point. I, I think we read the committee's going to talk to Naraki Smith because we've had a change with our staff assistant. You're going to investigate, right?
Yeah.
A some temporary assumption of some of those tasks, which is great. Moving on, friends, friends of the Chappaq, are there Melanie, who's like in the report?
Wait, I thought they said that report to be there for the little paper report because I am totally a per, we here are joining and watching. We had, we had our meeting two weeks ago.
Catherine may choose to speak.
She might be joining. He is, he is on.
Hey Catherine.
She probably can't speak.
She's muted.
She cannot speak.
Right.
So I would leave it, the major network, we really were just discussing about twelve members, ten members from the board. We're having a book sale, planning meetings, we have this month.
And when is the book sale?
The books sale will begin on May 11.
Which I checked is already in our calendar. Our new website's super countering, so what?
We, we have the hiatus and now we're back in business, but that's back for the after we all feel very good. We had a successful membership drive. And so we want to start discussing longer term plans. So both of the major items that we'll discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want me to allow Catherine to talk?
Yeah. If she chooses, yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Oh.
There you are.
Hi.
Yay, thank you. I appreciate you letting me join in. Hi Melanie, thank you for being there in person. Can you hear me okay?
Florence only heard.
Okay, so I just, Melanie mentioned our very successful membership drive. So the big note is, or the big takeaway is that we have now successfully figured out an additional source of fundraising above and beyond book sale. So finally, our annual fund drive has surpassed book sale income. So that's a wonderful testament to our team. And the fact is, is that now we have successfully, we're now, we have many more funds than we did before. So we look forward to working with the new director and always working with the librarians on requests for funds for various needs. I think Melanie mentioned the book sale dates, but yes, we're going to do setup on May 11th. And the sale will be the 13th through the 19th. I did want to make sure that was on the calendar. And we will work with the new director on the space because I know it's very daunting. We will need the same space we had last year, which includes the theater, the gallery and the program room. That worked out very well for us last year. We did receive a request regarding glass boards. So instead of both Denise and Amy wrote a very nice write-up for boards that can be used as whiteboards and they can be, they're very easy to clean. They would be mounted on walls of the meeting in the study rooms for people to use. We did mention to both Amy and Denise that we tentatively have agreed and the friends think it's a great idea, but would like to work with the new director once she's on board to make sure that it's, you know, because as with any of the things that we, or many of the things that we do provide funding for, there will be installation on your part and it's, it's your building. So, so while we will, we will fund the glass boards, we will work with the new director on installing.
Fantastic.
So very excited for that. And, and the last note that I have is just super brief in that and it was so refreshing to hear about all of your job responsibilities there. You're a very hardworking team of what, five of you? My gosh. So congratulations on getting a three-year term. I think that'll be great for the friend support that move. So we look forward to it. It does mean more, even more changeover. But I think that's a good thing, so lots of community members can get involved. On that note, this is today, well, now it's 2024, but 2025 will be my 10-year mark as the president of the Friends. And I am announcing. Um, and I am announcing my retirement. Um, a year and a half early. Um. And I will, I plan to stay on the board. Uh, but like you all have, uh, as you were discussing the challenges and the time commitments. Um, while ours is less, um, but it is still very demanding to be a president of anything for ten years. So, um. I will be working with our, uh, board members to develop, to continue to develop job descriptions. And various, um, and update our bylaws. Uh, to keep us up with the times, but, um, the friends all know. And I will work for a smooth transition while we scout for our next president.
That's great. Congratulations and thank you for those many years of service.
Thank you. Well, it's been my pleasure and I enjoy it. Um, but, uh, like you all, you know, you rotate through, we, we, we would like to get to a point of rotating through and making the job less. Um, maybe not maybe less demanding, but sharing in the wealth of all the work that is required, so. And that's all I have.
Thanks Catherine, thanks so much. And Melanie, thank you so much for coming. Um, the president's report, well, nothing like starting off on a word of, um, I don't, I don't have one. So. So it'll be really quick. Um, moving on to the library director.
Um, there's not a lot, a couple tiny little announcements. We are. We're gonna participate in a canned goods drive run by United Way and, uh, running through West July system. Kathy Paulson is gonna take it on. They will bring the bins and remove them, which is that part.
Did they say, did they say where it's going?
Actually.
Did they say where the food is going?
No, well, I don't know. I'm sure they know, but I don't know where it's going though. So, um. And then we got a, um, a nice letter. It was actually addressed to me and the staff and. It says. Dear Carolyn Restake, I want to take a moment to thank you and your staff for opening up the library. This was written January sixteenth, which was the day I think that was the. We closed early at three-thirty, yeah. Um, even for a few hours, despite the terrible weather and worse road conditions, everyone's dedication was appreciated. I live a fairly solitary life. I come to the library to read and write, but to hear other people for a few hours every day, just a few minutes. Um, I got today, we're appreciated. Thank you, David. And nobody knows. I think it's really nice, you know, I think it's a nice, that's a voting to the staff.
Well done, by the way, managing through.
Well, oh, the issues, I age ten years every time. And, and I'm on my turn. No, it's the staff who, who pick up the pieces, people like Denise and Shantel and so forth. Who really. Let everybody know and so forth. Anyway, I know that was nice. And I think the other stuff, um, oh, one last thing, which is that. Tao has been working with WLS to open old files and so now she's able to. Load on the board minutes, which you had asked her to do like that, so, which it was, she couldn't perform, but they were able to help her. So, um, okay.
I would just add, commenting on David's letter, that. I think a lot of our. Bottom members in our community rely on the library for exactly what David said. Just have a place to come to and be among people and. So.
I think so too.
I think it also speaks to how much time and energy goes into. Whenever we do have to close unexpectedly or for weather. That they're never easy decisions, knowing how much our community uses the library.
I would, I would also say this, this came up when we were talking about the closing. How do we communicate that to the community other than just the website? I had mentioned Nixiel, I think you said that the police department will not allow us to use Nixiel back, but the school district has something. And since we're essentially supporting it to the school district, maybe that's a way that if we are going to close. That'd be a way to send out a blast to the, uh, community.
I, you know, um. Don't, don't their blasts, you have to sort of sign up for because I, I mean, my kids have gone to the schools, but I don't get anything from the school.
You can sign up even if you don't have kids in the school. You have to actively sign up, right?
Right, which most people unfortunately, when they're done with having children in the district that they, that they don't. But maybe that's something that we could post more, right, that we could post that more.
Okay.
Do you want me to look into this through communication?
Yes, that would be great.
I'll ask, do you think it's appropriate that if the school district says, just send an email to someone, so if you're closing and we'll shoot that out, would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll look, I'll look into that.
There's also that electronic sign.
Yeah, but that you gotta drive by.
Right.
I wanna say also that people like Denise and others come from a long way, you know, from Queens, from, from Danbury and. It's, um. You know, we have to let them know early and, and they've been really noble and. Yomen duty, so now with this.
It's a good reminder that our staff is not all located.
No, they don't all live in Ash.
I wanted to say that, um, we follow the chapel plus we have this, um, social media and they follow us. And so that morning, um, that Tuesday morning, I saw their tweet that the school district was closed and I retweeted it. And then when we posted it, we were open and they retweeted our.
Really awesome, that's great.
Yes, they do, you know, they didn't try to. Then our message.
Did that include? Oh, sorry, yes, no, no.
Okay, moving to the finance committee. Brian, you wanna read down the agenda?
Sure, I've got, uh, budget planning with George and I were just, uh, talking about and we'll meet, uh. Take a time next week and make sure that, uh. Everything is in order. Um, the audit process, uh, I believe that's almost finalized, um, so that's, that's moving along. Claims audit process to be detailed by the finance committee, finance officers to sign up monthly. That's, uh, the new item. Uh, then recommendations for investment of the capital fund at a higher APR and banking alternatives for fifty percent of the capital fund. I guess we were gonna do some research there for more to come on that whole point.
May I interject just on the things I across it? I think Carolyn's been doing work. Investigating for our fault and I think you had made a comment in some earlier meetings that, uh, there is a policy and so.
Everything's being done.
What we need to do is, yeah, make sure it's the right policy, um.
I think it was that we're.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
And then endowments, there's been some talk about finding, uh, for the two endowments, uh, some original paperwork, which. I don't know that anyone has any name with this.
Um, well, I know that Shantel must have had lots of, a whole lot for any information about these endowments and you wrote some emails and. Um. Joe Gallo said he didn't know anything more about this. Um, when I was in North Salem, I found out the sort of the endowments we, which we were. Supposed to only use the interest from, um, we could hang on, take it out, but we could go back and take out interest from past years because. The assumption was we spent the appropriate, money on the appropriate books. So I asked Joe that and he said it's just the minimum.
It's a small amount, still they would contribute, but relatively negligible amount compared to the overall budget, but it'd be nice to make sure that the intent of the.
I don't know where to look. Oh, sorry, but it's coming back, I thought I could contact, are you, you all and.
Pam and I talked with her.
Your touches did.
So, would you like me to add a comment?
Yeah, sure. Oh, actually, if you want to do that.
Absolutely, right, uh-huh. Moving to any discussions, any questions about? Any question for the finance committee? Building in round committee. Okay, I'll take that. I did speak further with Bill today. Um. So let's see, on the K G and D proposals, um, I'll, I'll look to you for guidance. We had talked about having. Um, the gentleman who is counsel to CCSD on bonds, et cetera. Um, come in and present to us as sort of a training for the north, which I think would be useful. Um, and we've been in touch with Josh Caldwell Black, um. Who recommended, you know, now that they have a new facilities director that we've moved forward and coordinated a meeting. Um, I don't have a perspective date, et cetera. I would guess it would probably be in February. Um, I think until later, until Jennifer. Yeah. Okay, so maybe August, March, I think that's better. Um, the theater AV project. Um. I, I know that, um, Robin Freeman has kindly raised her hand to step in, um, assuming. Um, continuing to spend a great work, Shantel. And you have found in this regard, I think we should put it in the hands of our facilities department. Uh, you know, he's the one who, you know, first of all, I keep hearing about everything Robbins too.
Right.
She. Um, and it's his job to manage these sort of things that people, um, perform against the, basically what has been promised under contract with the RFP. Um, and in speaking with him, he's willing to, um, set them in that regard, so. Oh, great, okay. Um, let's see, we spoke about a few things, the roof electrical panel. This is the, the panel that's over fifty years old and dying. Um, which is pretty key to library. Uh, so we've, we've sent out an RFP. Um, received one proposal which currently wasn't drafted appropriately, so we've asked them to, to revise it. Um, we've had two rejections, apparently electricians at this point in time. I don't know if it's reflective of this recent storms or this. Sort of, um, electricians, which I've heard is a bigger US issue, um, but. Um, we may be down to one proposal, but. One fall.
Will be in my heart, yeah. Bill said to me an email this morning, um, that he was sort of nudging people. About the RFP with the penthouse, which is.
That we're.
That's right. And, um, nudging Kealan, Keating Electric, um. Pedro Martinez, PRM, and Gary Lynch, so he was nudging them about getting.
Proposals back, yeah. Good.
Okay, and we also had, um. Uh, environmental, um, maintenance contractors came and did, um. Uh, they took the door to looking for asbestos or they tested for asbestos.
And they, that proposal was within the library director authority level, so we haven't.
Yeah, I signed it, I signed it and sent it back, I hope it was.
Thank you. Um. And the initial feedback from our consultant is that the expectation is, it's not asbestos, so, but he expects to hear next week. Um. This week, um, weekend cleaners, he has not had time to proceed with, uh, this would be alternatives to Argo, so that's. Um, intended for moving forward. Um, Shantel Pena kindly obtained a proposal from Suburban for pest control versus a current vendor of McHale. Um, which provides pretty limited servicing, so, um, Bill and I agree will, um, contrast the, the two proposals. Um, and. Let me involve going back to McHale and saying, you know, can you step up the services to match them? Uh, but, but thank you, Shantel, for, for moving that forward. Um, Bill also is sending a request. Um, that the board authorized, um. Into CCSD to the new facilities director, um, to formalize our request to piggyback on their contracts. Which gains us favorable pricing, et cetera, and that could include the, the pest control. Um. Let's see, we just got to the stream management and, um, the concerns about the. The waterway there that it's not a family due. Um, it's probably a federal issue and, um. We're trying to determine, you know, who is, who would be the point person to have these discussions as well as having initial discussions with the technical. Uh, engineer to formulate proposals. Um. Bill's also looking at, um. Creating some barrier himself with what he termed riprap stone. Um, in some of the key areas of flooding. And he pointed out that there are five massive logs in the. Water feature or pool in the front of the library, um, which we'll ask our landscaper to remove when we think the weather's calms down some more. Can we say more about, about those, yeah, riprap stones, like he, what is that? My sense is that he's experimenting with, you know, could a kind of low-tech. Low-dollar solution offer any, um, improvement to us in a, you know, and watch it in a future storm, okay? Do we wanna see what it looks like before?
Yeah.
Um, all he told me was rectangular stone. Yeah, we hear a lot about what the aesthetic of it. Yeah, all this. Um. We talked about the light pole. Um, Bill's point is that the electricity enters the light pole well above the water levels, um, so he doesn't think it's a major concern. I think we need to address it. He said that the. I was hopeful that the penthouse electrician could, you know, take on this job as well. Apparently it's different types of. credentials and specialty, so, um, and that light pole, that light pole has always been there. Um, I'm not the expert on that, but, but I've been told by people who've been at the library all the time that it's, it's always been there and the erosion. And the growth of the stream bed, you know, sort of sucked it in. Um. We're going to get a proposal from LK for the water bottle filler. We're trying to find a vendor for the push button door harder than one would expect. And we're investigating a generator, which Bill said that a number, he's seen a number of library clients, um, go down this path. Um, so.
I was actually, uh, sitting at. And if you sit there and look at the grass, there is an enormous generator at Moncisco, I think it's put in the.
At the Moncisco library.
Yeah, it is the size of it. Said they have a big building, but they're not small. Yeah. Yeah.
They're also not a lifetime, you know, they, they have a, a lifespan to that.
Because they need service.
Although it's pretty long. Is it?
Pretty long.
They'll need servicing as well.
Yes.
Where you would put one of those, I mean.
No, they, they need to be tested monthly.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
It's, it's initially, is it an issue? I mean, why are we? We. This is why. You know, that it's also currently, basically libraries are doing it as something that would be more service. Sure, because we can be a, a place of, a place to go to.
I, I, I mean, which kind of, I suppose, depend on that. And, and, and how much they have to pay on servicing it.
And also, did they get any, because, because of what you're saying of the usage opportunity? That is there, is there a way to get some government money for it or? Okay, that's a great idea.
It also depends what degree of operational capability we need. Do we need just enough to keep the lights on or do we need enough to power computers and air conditioning?
Or to have, right, to add, to house people here if we do.
My guess is if we went through our cost benefit analysis, there's better ways to spend the money, benefit the community than an emergency, one or two days a a year. Like, that'd be my guess, but obviously the next part.
Well, but we have the community in recent years. As people have been out of power for ten days in parts of Chappaqua. Sandy, definitely right. But but even one of these. People often come here, people. Yeah. Cause they're powered without. And.
The library isn't powered during most of the day, right?
It was part of recently, yeah, we did just this past month. But that's what sort of sparked the thinking that we would. But also, you know, it's obvious that the weather is getting worse and worse. And so I think that this is when these kind of discussions start, like, well, you know, do you, do you think about it now? Do you make the plans now and buy it? Because it could be the next year that that the library starts to lose power because of a big storm, you know, needs to go. This is why, because of the weather getting worse.
I would disagree with that characterization because when I first moved here for two or three years, I probably had seven days of no power. And then it's it's really been a minor since so might might.
I think Connie has done a lot of treatment.
Right. So I'm wondering, so I'm wondering. I agree. When I first moved up here, I lost power all the time. And that's not the case for three years now. So I'm wondering if Connie Ed does need to come in, maybe and make some evaluation about our lines and maybe.
They're even different. So there are the lines that my person that are able to do the electrical work. When there were such long hours of there had been a decision made to reduce their expenses to half and they quit caravan the workers from other parts of the country. Of course, that doesn't work well when you have a massive storm. So they have redistributed it so that they do, they don't bring them up from Alabama and Texas anymore, which is what happened during standing down. And of course, when you have a less populated area, they they hit the ten thousand people can get power back in an hour. Our time. So we were devastated with ninety five percent power, without power. But we waited because, but for them to come up to us again. I do have a question about blood planes and about where is the decision that may be, if it may have to be elevated. And I don't know if the, if the police station also has a generator because one of the real risks is that of being in in a blood plane, a known problem, that that is something that the map will be drawn, but at the same time, should be very aware of that fact because the the generator needs, needs to be organized and they have different ways of executing blood rescue at times.
And the one in Moncisco sits, because you know, Moncisco sits that little sort of water. Says way up.
That's right. They're right on the waterway.
Yeah, yeah, it sits, it sits up and I think it's yellow or orange. I mean, rather exciting.
We are all in a watershed.
Yeah.
Everyone.
Everyone.
And now we're just starting to really realize what that means for us. So, yeah, especially with the with pension base then on one side and then the stream on the library is extremely vulnerable.
I know that several years ago, the head of building grounds for Chappaqua School District went down to Washington. Government armed services had surplus generators that they were just giving away. And you said you had to come and get them transported themselves. And I think the school district may have taken three or four. Now, I'm sure that they're probably not state of the art. You know, but they're things that probably work on gasoline or whatever in a you know, a pinch that you could, you know, fire them up. Not that you'd have something that would ordinarily cut on like, you know, a Genarak or something like that. I don't know if that's working. I know the school district did it.
I think you could get a New York State instruction grant for this, and I think you could combine the electrical work on the penthouse and the generator. Just write an explanation of those those grants. Applications are due in August, hopefully. So you can't have done it by the time you apply. It could be in progress, but it can't be completed. So I mean, if you wanted to, that's.
Thank you.
I mean, I would even help. I I could come in and help with that because I've done it. I did it a couple. And I know Chantel did one for you. And I was on that committee for a while.
I'm sorry. Oh, no, all good. All good. Thank you, everybody from your end. Personnel Committee.
Okay, so regarding the employee handbook, Marge Perlin is returning on February first, and so we will have the employee handbook finalized at the next meeting, which will increase the chances. So stay tuned for that. We've got a situation with staff and and staff assistant. Chantel Pena had resigned back in January twelve. We got me one and four, and we've gone through the process of finding her replacement. I know that Carolyn, you talked about, you've done some interviewing of people who are eligible on the civil service list, and we've begun to engage in that work. But we haven't finished it. So where we stand is we still have a fair amount of work that needs to be done. Chantel, we did remarkable work in terms of helping the library function over the last several years. Has a lot of expertise and knowledge. And so I'm going to suggest that we bring Chantel on in a part time position, which she may not be able to do. But I'm going to propose that the board move to hire Chantel in a part time position. Did I make the motion verbally stated now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is I move the board to approve the hiring of Chantel Pena in a part time position. His position will not be seventeen hours per week. The position will last no longer than Friday, February sixteen, and the compensation rate will be sixteen, thirty five dollars per hour. And then all of the other details will be worked out by the library director.
I second that.
Second.
Okay, so they they think that it's going to last too?
Yeah.
So we're just authorizing, just to be clear here, we're authorizing Carolyn, who is the library director, to to offer okay? And then stay tuned for further developments. I should say to the community, just to to say, one of the things that makes hiring challenging in the board is because of civil service rules. And so unlike, say, a normal private business, which can sort of pretty much hire anyone who's good at the work in the United States, we, as a public library in New York State and in West County, have our hiring decisions somewhat prescribed by the service. You want to put that in?
That's really frustrating in this case because we're dealing with someone who's worked so hard for the library and is clearly capable. Disappointing.
And I just wanted to make the point that you picked the or the goal with the February sixteenth date is to allow a week overlap with the new.
With the new library director, Jennifer.
We take a vote?
All in favor?
You know.
Then a couple other things, just that we're increasing the salaries of some pages to sixteen dollars effective January first, match the increase in the new wage in Westchester County. And there's, when Jennifer comes, we will have a conversation with her about facilities manager. We, we, that's, I think, something that we want to pursue from the library director, new director, board, which is February twelve.
Yes.
Right, February twelve. So you guys, there we go.
Moving to policies, which is myself. Alrighty, um, the, the the new, moving down, free down, the new foil sexual harassment and pandemic policies are to be reaffirmed as of one twenty two, twenty twenty four in board packet. We are eliminating the confidentiality. I will make motions for all of this. I'm just running through. Eliminate the confidentiality of library records and reaffirm the privacy and confidentiality of records policy as the first policy is covered in the second policy. A motion to approve the updated version of the exhibition policy, policy for display cases that was previously dated by the twenty twelve. The Finance Committee, please correct me if I am wrong. The claims audit policy is incorporated within our financial policy and that we were, we collectively approved the language for, felt that the language for that policy, the claims policy was absolutely fine. The update of the purchasing and bidding policy, that really does feel very long ago. So I'm trying to think. You reviewed it, yes? The fairly well count on. We did review it and we have some of the special non thresholds. Yeah, and I know that with the new library director, as well as our interim library director, we were okay with keeping it. Upping, upping it. Right. I don't remember the number that we upped it to. So I don't have that policy. So let's, let's include that draft language for the next. Okay, does that make sense? Yes, absolutely. But the other one.
This is not my ability to believe this.
Yeah, exactly. But I don't think, this won't be difficult because it does, it does exist. It's just that we haven't discussed it for about two months. But it is, right, it's all been done. Okay.
I just don't want to be, you know.
We we are in motion. So if I can, just, we've got one issue on the claim voted publicly. I know we've had a lot of excellent discussion about our preference for aggregating policies. You know, basically, I think it's, what's clear was to our community and the staff, I'm sure, probably also. The one point I would make on the claims audit policy is that it was such a focus of the of New York State when they came out with the latest handbook, that it was the single biggest modification they made was to put more emphasis on that policy and those processes and procedures. So I would think about if if our decision is to keep the financial policies aggregated, I would think about separating them on one.
The claims audit policy.
Yeah.
Would you, Jennifer, that be part because of concerns around fraud?
Yeah, financial oversight, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And libraries have had experience with them.
Okay, again, that's finished. So we'll just, we'll just put it, we'll put it separate.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll, I'll help take care of that. But I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that that gets in with, with showing, running it by you in three years. Okay. So the first motion I'm going to make is a motion to approve the updated joint, the exhibition policy for display cases. For a second?
Second.
Okay, Sean. Discussion points? Any discussion? It's really felt that it's actually in the hands of our curator and director. Okay.
And you've talked about it in the prior meetings as well.
Exactly. Okay, a vote? All in favor? I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve the I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm the following policy, reaffirm the foil sexual harassment and pandemic policies to be dated one twenty two, twenty four. Second? Ms. Beckman? Okay, Carol has talked about this.
Yeah.
Prior.
Yeah.
And I have been working with Carolyn. Vote? George, Brian? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a a motion to eliminate the confidentiality of library records. The one dated one thirty one eighty five, and reaffirm the privacy and confidentiality of record policy. Three nineteen, twenty thirteen, as the first policy, because the, as the first policy is covered in the second policy, all reaffirm that the second policy will be reaffirmed one twenty two, twenty four. And I have the policy, I have my motion in board packet. So that gets complicated.
How do you think so?
Correct, that we're eliminating the. Correct. And a second? Jennifer, most likely? Okay. A discussion? I I'd like to bring to the board's attention how much work and what a pleasure it has been working with Carolyn Redneck. Economist, and I hope I haven't contributed to her aging process.
Doing the policies were, thank you very much. Doing the policies was sort of a fun little intellectual exercise.
Thank you.
I would say, so the claims audit we're leaving, and I think personally, since I did them, the purchasing and bidding policy ought to be looked at, just.
Review again?
A review.
Okay, great.
So the the foil sexual harassment, pandemic confidentiality and exhibition policies are to be changed, wearing changed, which is a phrase I think.
Correct, correct. And the red line is in the is in.
Absolutely, to tell town.
In the board packet and the, right, the clean one, the new one, the red line. All of it. So are we ready to take a vote? All in favor for eliminating the first confidential? Okay. All unanimous. Thank you.
These documents have a previous board member's name on it.
What do you say again?
In the packet, in the board packet where you pass these. You have, I don't know what that makes a difference.
Oh, I thought that, oh, I think that, okay, I didn't realize that that was there. I thought that I cleaned it up a little bit. Okay.
It 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 doesn't affect the motion. It just.
Joe's copy it exactly. Make it current. Okay, great. Thank you. Alright, I think we're we're done with, we're done with policies and bylaws. Are you reaffirming the claims audit policy? I'm going to subsequent it. I made a note to bring it to the next one because it's not in the board packet. So I don't think that we should run it right now. Alright, so moving, I want to figure it reaffirming. Because I think that, well, we are, yes, we are reaffirming it, but it's not in the board's public. Which it is, that's true. Okay, then you, so, okay, so I make a motion to to separate the claims audit policy from the financial policy and have it as a standalone policy.
We're going to run that right now.
We're going to run on that right now because it's already, as Jennifer said, it's already open, it's already viewed for the public. It's not new to the public. It already exists in progress. Okay, and I'll, I'll write that. I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, vote? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. That was great. I mean, that's pretty, yeah, you have a really gorgeous policy and bylaw.
Well.
You guys are clearing the deck.
Okay, moving on to Communications Committee. Yeah, okay, moving on to communications committee. Um. Who would like to speak to that? George, do you want to speak to that about the board minutes?
Oh, that's what I said enough now.
Okay, perfect. All right, wonderful, yeah, okay, um, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Well, she hasn't done it, but I, I don't think yet, but she, she told me today that she has with her, worked at WLS, and they were, they're IT people, and they were able to sort of fill out a deal.
I have nothing else there, as I mentioned earlier, we mentioned I'm going to speak to the uh the school district about communicating library closures through their uh.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, uh, moving on to search committee, to have to speak to. We have we have a written offer, selected candidate Jennifer Daddio, she has accepted for February twelve, twenty twenty-four. Um, we have encountered a little bit of a civil service snafu that between her hiring and the list expiration, we we hired her post with the civil service list expiration, so we have now, according to civil service, we have to go over a new list again and send letters out to candidates, all of which Jennifer Daddio is well aware and informed of, and all the paperwork to get this, to get the list has been started already, and we're just awaiting to get the list, to send the letters out again. So to clarify, the committee did everything appropriately, that you followed the list of eligible to, you worked with the group of three, et cetera, um the initial position was no definite. Correct, so then you declared the list broken, went out to the broader marketplace, a candidate came back from the list, came back. Exactly. And it, it was passed, it was post when the list expired, so so we just have to take some steps back in order to just move forward. Okay, it's a great explanation. And then that's where we are, okay, um. Next steps, responsibility, secretary to note all action items for the board, library director to note all action items for the staff and staff. Our next board meeting is February twenty-sixth, and we like, we'd like everything for the board packet to be in by Monday, February nineteenth. We will be in person and on Zoom. Um, if anybody needs any accommodations, please contact the library.
I think the nineteenth President's Day?
Yes.
And and we do not.
Yes, because they think that the library is closed out.
We do not have a special meeting scheduled.
No, we have no special. That's cool. Okay, um, is there, is there anything else that anybody in the library, and you don't have to do the names for. Not at this time, at this time. Okay, um.
Should uh, should the notes still say to contact Chantel if someone needs special uh consideration?
Good point, um, I think at this point, to contact.
I entered the heads of contacts with CHA Director.
CHA, CHA Director.
Correct.
Correct, or CHA Board.
CHA Board.
CHA Board or CHA Director, we will do everything we can, we will set all of our. Okay, um, oh, also, the secretary will take on CHA Board, okay. All right, it is moved where, um, that the board is going to adjourn during this meeting, uh, eight twenty-seven P M, do I have a second? Yes. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Brian, vote, you know? Thank you, everybody, you're invited.
What's the big thing?
Secretary, I will be back in time. There's much to me, but. Oh, I'm.
During the. All right, Monday.